All right, welcome everybody to the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2023 at 5:30 PM. Roll call please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Wasowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Vami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Avine. We have a corps.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's announcements, got a few announcements today. We had a productive meeting, I think, over on the East Side. They invited us over to talk river crossing. I think we've got that item on the agenda today and it was discussed at the committee the whole last week. On Wednesday, January 11th, we had another combined city council and park district meeting, talking about some quality of life initiatives, another kind of early stage, but another exciting possibility for the city. On January 12th, I was out in Bismarck and got a chance to not only meet with the director of the Department of Corrections out there, but also attended a dinner at the governor's mansion with all the big city mayors. So we got a chance to sort of talk, talk workforce, talk problems, but also talk about the positives in the community. And lastly, just like to, on a sad note here, like to offer condolences to the family of retired Lieutenant Mark Thorpe. He was a former UND police lieutenant, just passed away this Saturday. He was with the UND Police Department for 20 years, had a long battle of cancer and passed away. He was also an Army veteran, US military veteran, and happy to report that the Grand Forks Police Department will be, will have the honor guard there for his funeral. So thank you, Chief, in the Police Department for that. It's all from Mayor's comments, so we go on to two citizen comments.
Todd Leek.
Mr. Leek, please.
Well, thank you for letting me speak to the City Council. My name is Todd Leek and my address is 2371 10th Avenue Northeast, Emerytown, North Dakota. I farm 1,600 acres in Grand Forks County in Fairfield, Chester, North Hill Townships. I am a member of the Farmers Co-op, Emerytown Farmers Co-op Elevator Company and the Thompson Farmers Co-op Elevator Company, both located in Grand Forks County. I served on the Board of Directors of Emerytown Farmers Co-op for 10 years and Secretary for Board for three years. I am the past president, a past president of Grand Forks County Farmers Union. I would like to summarize three distinct issues surrounding the proposed Fu Feng Wet Corn Milling Plant, particularly for the newer city council members. First of all, I would like to comment on the adverse economic impact proposed, that the proposed Fu Feng Wet Corn Milling Plant would have on several cooperative grain elevator companies in Grand Forks County and adjacent counties. The local elevators in Grand Forks County and surrounding counties have built their businesses and facilities without subsidy from the government and the proposed Fu Feng Wet Corn Milling Plant, Grand Forks, would be subsidized at $106 million in infrastructure and tax incentives. To farmers, a proposed Fu Feng Corn Milling Plant is merely a corn buyer. These subsidies of proposed Fu Feng Wet Corn Milling Plant represent an uneven economic playing field and unfair competition to existing local elevator companies. The second issue is the 1.4 billion pounds of biosolids that will be generated at the proposed plant. According to the wastewater treatment plan proposed earlier, these biosolids will be land-applied, not taken to the landfill for alternative daily cover. There is yet to be a plan for acquiring leases to the land and where to apply, let alone the suitability of these biosolids as soil amendments. And last and certainly not least, there is the issue that the Fu Feng Group, which includes Fu Feng USA, is an improbable violation of the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act that Congress passed unanimously and was signed into law December 23rd, 2021. Based on the best publicly available data, under the rebuttable presumption clause, the US government presently holds that Fu Feng USA is guilty of participation in and/or benefiting from forced labor in its supply chain operations. The problem for Fu Feng is that their Xingjiang factory is located in a state-owned economic development park and is serviced by utilities, water and coal, whose owners, Xingjiang Production and Construction Corps and Zinti TBEA respectively, have been identified publicly as violators of the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act and have been named by the US State Department as guilty of genocide in the case of the Xingjiang Production and Construction Corps. This will likely be too high a burden for Fu Feng to overcome to, in order to earn an exemption under the Uyghur Forced Labor Prevention Act. Also, in 2016, Congress enacted the Global Magnitsky Human Rights Accountability Act, which allows the US government to sanction foreign persons implicated in human rights abuses anywhere in the world, effectively freezing assets and disallowing exports and imports. This could allow Fu Feng's, could affect Fu Feng's ability to use as capital in the United States. Also, the United Nations Human Rights Office of the High Commissioner issued its report on human rights violations in Xingjiang on August 31st, 2022, after visiting and investigating human rights violations in Xingjiang. I will spare you the most atrocious details and encourage you to read it for yourself. As part of the UNHCR report, the International Labor Office Committee of Experts on the Application of Conventions and Recommendations noted various indicators suggesting measures severely restricting the free choice of employment. I quote from it, "These includes government-led mobilization of rural households with local townships organizing transfers in accordance with labor export quotas, the relocation or transfer of workers under security escort, onsite management and retention of workers under strict surveillance, the threat of internment in vocational education and training centers, if workers do not accept government administration, and the inability of placed workers to freely change employers." These sort of practices are not clearly, are clearly not within the values of this community, nor should we bring our community, to our community companies like Fu Feng that profit from those practices. I'll just, one paragraph left. I assure you, I am sure that US City Council members have good economic sense and a true moral compass, and know the difference between economic development and economic cannibalism, that you hold high the stewardship of our land and water, and above all, value human rights for all people in our community, in our country, and for those who suffer in other countries.
Thank you, Mr. Leek.
For the aforementioned issues, I request the Grand Forks City Council pass a motion to end the development agreement with Fu Feng USA and terminate the project in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Leek.
Jason Patrick.
Mr. Patrick, please.
Bear with me one second here. All right, good evening, Mayor Bucinski, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my fellow audience members, and those who are viewing from home and in the nation's capital. For the better part of a year, our community in this council has been embroiled in a conflict which never needed to escalate or carry on for as long as it has. The conflict on the topic of Fu Feng, its threat potential to our airbase, its current missions and future missions to the United States Air Force and Space Force, as well as the actions and inactions of our city's leadership, have brought with it division, derision, and a palpable level of distrust and feelings of disrespect within our community. The CFIUS review and the continued comments of two United States centers for this state should have changed the tenor of our meetings. It should have been something to open the eyes of the city government. Unfortunately, the full review was never brought to fruition in its entirety due to the determination of non-jurisdiction, which does not, nor has it ever, indicated that there are no national security concerns, nor does it signal a green light for the PNE project to continue. Those who think this, or are under the impression of that being the case, have a gross misunderstanding of the CFIUS process and clearly hold little regard for the statements of the Senators Kramer and Hoven. Tonight, we, this community and this city government, stand teetering on the precipice of seeing exactly what the lack of meaningful discussion, and as some would describe it, willful ignorance and even hubris will bring. We stand at the edge of what could be our last opportunity to resolve this issue once and for all, and preserve this city's relationship between the base and all that entailed by that. What brings us to this point tonight centers around national security, reading between the lines and a full and complete disclosure of information within the elements of our federal government that are still very actively engaged and watching. Make no mistake when I say that, as I say it with absolute sincerity, when I tell you that this city council, its pursuits, and these meetings are still actively monitored by those at the highest levels of government with deep interest and concern. Due to the nature of the investigation and the fact that the city aligned itself with the attorneys of Cooley Law Firm and other factors, the Department, the Departments of CFIUS Committee could not seek out members of this council and city government for discussion. But those factors did not prevent the city government from reaching out to those members of CFIUS to gain clarity. And to date, this city council, the mayor, the city administrator, have all failed to do so, all while the city has continued to make claims that you have spoken to the Air Force and that you have spoken to the Office of Special Investigations, when the record at upper echelons indicate that this may not be the case at all. To these ends, I encourage you, Mayor Bucinski, members of the city council, City Administrator Phelan, and yes, even you, Mr. Gostad, let's have these discussions. We need to have them, and have them with an open ear and mind. I urge you to reach out to the Director of Foreign Investment, Review Mitigation, Compliance, and Monitoring at the United States Department of the Air Force and Space Force, Dan Burke. Through our many conversations, the lack of effort to reach out to CFIUS by the city government has been a consistent theme. You will be provided with his contact information so that you can reach out to him. I believe you will find him a competent and capable individual, who has had 26 years of honorable naval service under his belt and has served for 12 years, working directly with the CFIUS process, and has been personally decorated for his work blocking foreign investment entities posing a direct risk to national security by the warrior monk himself, former Secretary of Defense and former Marine Corps General, General James Mattis. He reports directly to the Chief of Staff of the Air Force, General Brown. And if you recall, he has visited these very chambers as a part of his own investigative efforts. I also recommend to you, Mr. Mayor, to reach out to Dan, I recommended to you, Mr. Mayor, to reach out to Dan in an email, which went unanswered and unacknowledged. In closing, to borrow a few lines from General Mattis and a statement that he made to the Iraqi leaders following the invasion in 2003, "I come in peace. I did not bring artillery, but I am pleading with you with tears in my eyes. Please engage in meaningful conversation with the individual and organizations I mentioned earlier. Engage in meaningful discussion with your citizens and examine objectively, without confirmation bias, the information that is available to you and that will be made available to you before the full weight of the federal government is brought to bear upon this situation, and this ends poorly for everyone involved. There is still time to do the right and responsible and honorable thing. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Patrick.
Sean Volclair.
Mr. Volclair, please.
Yeah, good evening, a very tough act to follow there. I view that as option A, and I would view what I'm going to say as option B. Option A would be the preferred option. So first of all, Sean Volclair, Stephen, Minnesota, here to speak on Fu Feng. First, a couple of things, Mr. Mayor Bucinski, last time you said you would follow up about briefing received. I sent emails, have not received anything, would look forward if you could address it at some point. Also, I had a request regarding Northern Plains Nitrogen. If you could expand upon who the money is behind that, who the, who's behind that, because there's concerns, it's another Chinese organization tied into this. So anyway, moving on, this evening I am here to share a simple action the city of Grand Forks can take to improve relationships with the citizens and members like myself regarding Fu Feng USA according to becoming part of, becoming part of the community and the Grand Forks Air Force Base. The simple solution involves engaging a qualified independent consulting firm with national security clearance. They can work, if you have questions regarding the sincerity or the character of your two US senators that have had over 40 years of acting but nothing in the best interest of the state of North Dakota and all the valve, they have the absolute top security clearance available. And you choose to ignore or engage them, that causes concern among people like me. To that effect, I left Mr. Phelan a list of four national security firms that can engage the senators, as well as the people at the Pentagon with security information that you may find more than interesting. They can't tell you the facts, but simply the access and credibility to that should help a lot. Again, I can't epanize the disconnect between people like myself, members of the community, what the council has said verbally, and then you see the black ink and white documents that are disconnected from that. And they're not small matters, it's a repeated behavior that occurs. So as a proactive and solution-oriented member of the regional community, I have identified, submitted four consulting firms that would be acceptable for CFIUS, United States Air Force Director for Risk Management and Mitigation for the Air Force and Space Force, Dan Burke, that if you don't want to engage him directly, these firms could also be engaged. It makes more sense to engage him directly rather than go to mid area. Excuse me. And I simply say that's a very, he has the direct information available. I still struggle with Cooley Law Firm and engagement of Bridget Rodnike, because in my conversations with the people at CFIUS, all the information she had access to and provided, it was available for free, available for free from CFIUS and their information. So with that being said, if you can engage free information right from the source, why would you seek out somebody with lesser information that costs you money? I still struggle with that. Perhaps, Mr. Gostad, at some point you could explain that to me. With that being said, you know, I thank you kindly for your time, your allowing me to participate and remember the community, and I really truly hope that you can act in the best interest of all the citizens and the associated areas of Grand Forks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volclair.
Craig Spicer.
Mr. Spicer, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Craig Spicer from Grand Forks, lifelong resident, glad to be here and glad to be speaking against Fu Feng Group Limited, or as they call themselves, Fu Feng USA. So Fu Feng comes to town. Red flag reality check. No Grand Forks Air Force Base, they fought for years to retain, they shut down. No general aeronautics drone program, they shut down. No Space Force program, NACOMA, North Dakota, they shut down. No new ISR mission, Grand Forks Air Base, they shut down. What does this say to all of our veterans that we have fought for this country and supported our airbase for all these years? Next item. No water for Grand Forks residents because of drought conditions. Fu Feng plant, up to 6 to 10 million gallons per day. Use and abuse. 3.6 million gallons discharged into multiple systems. Water with corn processing chemicals, possible river, Cooley and diversion ditch contamination. No clean air. Largest plant in Dakota to add to our air pollution problems. Plant is located in the worst possible location because of north winds. It will affect UND, it will affect Riverside Park residents, then Altru, then the South End businesses, and then on to South End residences. There will be no doubt, it will have a severe impact on our air quality. I don't depend on any government agencies to protect us from possible hazards and accidents. Fines do not fix these problems, we've seen that before. And then be ready for a new and not-so-pleasant odor from this plant of $700 million, the largest plant in North Dakota. Millions of pounds of sludge byproduct that I have dealt with for many years, to be dispersed in our ecosystems and onto our land, and then more new smells to deal with, over 20 to 30 years as this plant is predicted to be here. That sounds like long-term contamination to me. Endangering our birds, American eagles, hawks, red flag, sorry, another red flag, endangering our birds, American eagles, cranes, wildlife, et cetera, because of the plant location close to the rivers, streams and Cooleys in our area. They are there, they have already disrupted eagles and birds that were in that Fu Feng property that our city had the audacity to put the contractors in there and mow those trees down where there were nests in there. Somehow or there or another, they got it approved by the game and fish and wildlife. I don't know how that happened, it should have never happened. A loss of acres and acres of rich, productive North Dakota farmland to a known adversary, CCP China, which we, the taxpayer, will subsidize with federal, state, and local dollars. Doesn't quite seem right. Add hundreds of trucks, railroad cars, every day causing more citywide traffic, more delays, some very long delays, more hazards, more accidents, and more taxes for new roads, possible overpasses, and infrastructure. So who's going to pay those taxes? I think we know the answer to that already. Plus, many years of construction inconvenience. This new high-tech $700 million plant will be built with used parts shipped from California that a plant was shut down 12 to 15 years previous to that. They should be scrapped out with more potential for this plant to fail rather than succeed. I'm almost done. All this risk, our community for what? We have no one to feel more risk for our other businesses losing employees. Already, for years, we have supported China enough through other programs and businesses. We should have absolutely not let Fu Feng come to Grand Forks for one minute. Don't think that this plant is not owned, controlled, and subsidized by the Chinese Party regime. We, the people of Grand Forks, have voiced our opinion many times over to what seems to be deaf ears. We thought that we could expect more from our city leaders. Instead, of standing with us, they chose to give in, and the company that does not believe in any of our values or morals comes from a country that now is and will be our adversary and our enemy for years.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer.
These city leaders do not represent the people of Grand Forks and what we stand for.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spicer.
Ron Franz.
Mr. Franz, please.
Yes, good evening and thank you. I guess I'll just preface this to say that if I had had the opportunity to vote, I would have voted against the plant, the Fu Feng plant, for a couple of reasons. Enough would be the reason enough would have been the likelihood of their involvement with slave labor, even though that's not proven, and that's because the process is so not transparent. And also, I'm concerned about, for instance, there was, there was an estimate by somebody considered to be an expert, that it would double our methane emissions. And then we can, we can add to that the so-called nuisance odors and so forth. We've all dealt for, anyone who's been here as long as I have, many have longer, have been dealt with, have dealt with the smell of money from the beet plant, which was, you know, much worse before. And finally, they're kind of cleaning up their act, I think, but that's been a concern. So just, but the model, just the model presented at last meeting was quite interesting to me, and just focusing on the air, air quality things. You know, there was a diagram of, you know, different points of emissions, right, including the entry, meaning, you know, the pollution, possible pollution from trucks. There are four points inside the plant that, you know, would be areas to watch emissions, right? And then also the exit, the byproduct exiting. It seems like in that presentation, there were certain promises made, not necessarily promises, but, you know, we were led to believe that, well, we can't really control the truck emissions, but inside the plant, let's be assured that everything will, you know, conform with low emission standards, and the exit product will be totally dry, which I would assume would have less methane and less odor, that's great, you know, but the, to tie this together, if you're, and it looks like, you know, in all honesty, you're going ahead with the plant, the, to tie all this together, what kind of assurances can the city build in to assure that, you know, minimal pollution, minimal insults to air quality is done? And I'm not an expert in any of those areas, but I would suggest that these promises be laid out in a contract, and that this contract be with Fu Feng, and that this, and that the emissions be monitored. I don't think we can totally trust other bodies to do that, I think the city needs to be involved in that. And I think that the violations of the contract, if they happen, there need to be teeth, there need to be, you know, significant penalties in the contract for, you know, especially for continuing violations. So that's basically what I have to say, I appreciate the time you've given me.
Thank you, sir.
Dennis Cadlec.
Mr. Cadlec, you need to stay on that side, Mr. Cadlec.
I've got one of these emails a day.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'll leave this one to Todd.
Okay.
He's got one in your email, but, you know, and thank you for your time, but, you know, you come out with rules are rules, we got to abide by the rules, through Jason Patrick here last week. And, you know, everybody's got rules they got to abide by, including the city. Now, the problem I got here is with the city sidewalk that's about six blocks long, it's the only sidewalk between 40th and 36th Avenue South. And that thing, every winter, I got a call to get them to come and clean it. Last winter, they kept it clean up until the first of the year and quit. This year, they haven't touched it yet. If you look on that paper, I sent that to Mr. Cunningham back in December 9th, because all the storms we had, I all the storms we had, I let things slide. It still hasn't been touched. There's areas of that sidewalk now that have over 15 feet of snow on it. That's a city sidewalk. Why don't the city clean it? Or why doesn't the city get somebody to clean it? When Mr. Obel was head of the street department, it only took me one phone call, and Mr. Obel took care of it. You know, he was an honorable man. He played by the rules. And, you know, if one of us is asked to play by the rules, let's all of us ask to play by the rules. And I was going to pick a little bit on Sherry tonight about rules, but she's acted very decently tonight, so I'm not going to get on that too much. But, you know, again, rules are rules. And Todd, I'd say the same thing for you. Rules are rules. You got to follow the rules. And if people aren't following the rules, you're going to have to make sure they follow the rules. And the most important thing here is, you need to listen. You really, really need to listen. And if you don't want to listen to me, that's fine, because that's pretty much occurred so far. But I'll tell you one thing, you know, Mr. Patrick's an honorable man. You know, when he was asked to abide by the rules, he just let it go, because that's the type of person he is. But the message he delivered here tonight is one of the, I didn't believe it could be done. You all have the option to speak to a blue badge. And if you're wondering if there's concerns that you don't know about, speak to the blue badge. And, you know, if you don't talk to Dan Burke, it lays upon your own head at this point, because unbelievably, they have given you that option. I didn't think that was going to be possible. So really, you know, you got a late Christmas present, take use of it. And if you don't want it, it's going to be on your own shoulders, and remember that. But you were given something very fine, decent here tonight. Take the most advantage of it, because you'll never be given nothing, nothing with that much value again in your life. I can guarantee you that. Use it. Use it to your advantage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kadlec. Mr. Koster, please.
Yeah, I'm with the Red River Snowmobile Club. I'm sure most of you know me already. Just wanted to bring up a couple of things. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have already probably made up your mind, or at least have a pretty good idea what your thoughts are regarding the snowmobile trail realignment. I use the word realignment because it's moving the trail from an unsafe area to a place that it is safe. There was a trail existing. We're just asking to move it to a new place, something that's safer. I'm going to make some assumptions. Forgive me if I'm incorrect, but I'm assuming that most of you did not know that we even had a snowmobile trail in town, okay? I'm guessing now you do know, okay? I bet you didn't know who was responsible for that snowmobile trail. I'm guessing that now you do, that the Red River Snowmobile Club is responsible for that trail. I'm also going to make an assumption that you probably didn't even know who the Red River Snowmobile Club was before this, or if you did, you probably didn't know a lot about us, okay? And again, I'm going to assume at this point that you probably know more about us and understand that we are a responsible group. We've been here for a number of years. We're well-funded. We're well-equipped, and we are going to be here for the future. When we say we're going to do something like grooming this trail through town, we are honorable, and it will happen. We will do it. Now, the other thing I think that you probably may not have known is all snowmobile trails within the town are at no cost to the city. The city does nothing other than just give permission to where they should be, and that's really all we're asking. There's no funding involved. There's no manpower involved. There's really nothing. Now, you may have feelings over whether or not it's the correct thing to have within the Greenway. I understand that. I'm probably not going to say anything that's going to change your mind regarding that. I have forwarded, I tried to forward some information. I'm sure some of you I've talked to with some trails in other parts of our region that this does exist, very, very similar areas, parks, just like our Greenway where these trails exist. There are snowmobile trails. There are cross-country ski trails. There are hiking trails, snowshoe trails, winter use. Our winters are long here. We don't have that many opportunities to go out and enjoy the outdoors. There's not that many of us who go outside and enjoy. Us as snowmobilers, absolutely, we would like to be able to recreate in town. You may not have realized how many snowmobiles or snowmobilers there is in Grand Forks. I'm guessing, based on this whole situation that we have before us, you probably know now, when you drive around town, you look, there are snowmobiles everywhere. I would, just on a whim, and this isn't accurate, but I'm going to say there's probably one in every city block. If you see them outside, there's a lot of them. You don't see them, probably parked in garages. So that means there's a lot of people in this town. So now, there's only a few of us here, the Red River Snowmobile Club, who's actually taking this situation on and wanted to talk to you all folks about it and tell you what we're doing. But we're just the voice of snowmobilers. We're not alone. It's just that we're speaking, or I'm speaking, in behalf of all these other snowmobilers. So please know, it isn't just me standing before you. It's a lot of people standing before you at this time, so. That's really all I have to say, is just wanted to make a few points. So please, you know, do what you have to do, but just know that we're here. We will be here, and we'll do what we say we're going to do. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Koster. Mr. Chandler, please.
Mayor Baczynski, City Council, thank you for hearing our argument to further expand the Greenway Trail south of Demers to 62nd. The two main things that the Red River Snowmobile Club has to offer is education through certification, training, and the grooming and signing of a safe trail. I am confident that with the help of several key individuals in our city, we can come up with a safe route that is advantageous to everybody involved. I know it is possible to coexist. I would like to suggest the formation of a committee to establish and bring forth a plan that we can bring before Mayor Baczynski and our City Council, something that you can get behind. I believe that with a groomed trail and proper signage, speed limits that can be enforced, fines that are stiff enough to deter people from breaking the law, a police department that is confident they can enforce that law, keep the disorderly in check through enforcement and education, our club would be willing to provide the grooming, signing, and volunteers to clean up and prepare for the winter season, which for us is December 1st through March 30th. And I would also love to be on that said committee to figure it out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. Ms. Stigman, please. You got a guest with you, too.
Yes. What is your name?
Piper Yusay.
This is my daughter, Piper. So I am a business owner in Grand Forks. I own two spas and salons in Grand Forks. My family and I live along the Greenway South End off of 55th. Our family owns the farm on 62nd Avenue and Belmont Road. We're a family of snowmobilers here and at our lake home on Lake Bemidji. By the way, there are numerous spots along the snowmobile trail in Bemidji, north and south, that cross-country skiers and snowmobilers either cross paths or share a portion of the trail for a short distance. When approaching a skier on the snowmobile trail, the skier will temporarily move over or the snowmobiler will pass safely along the skier. We usually will get a thank-you wave and continue on the trail. We coexist with no problems. I think if we put our heads together, the snowmobile trail could stay as close to the river as possible and stay away from all humans. The extension of the Greenway to 62nd Avenue will allow other snowmobilers, such as my family, to access through the city without the need to access the city streets. Trailering to another part of Grand Forks or East Grand Forks to access existing trails does not make any sense for the average person wanting to snowmobile to a local restaurant or to hook up with the trail to go to Elverito, Oslo, or Manville, for example. Our kids have their own 120 sleds. They ride on our own private property. We would like a safe trail for our family to enjoy the winter and give our kids something to do and help support other businesses by using trails to take us further. Please consider this extension of the Greenway south of Demers to 62nd Avenue. I would never let my kids go on the river, ever. Thank you.
Good evening.
Ms. Croker, please.
I won't repeat what I've said before about how important I think it is to protect the Greenway space from motorized vehicles. I have been looking, though, at the snowmobile routes that have been designated over the years in an attempt to understand where the snowmobilers are coming from and find ways to accommodate them. And I've noticed that some of the snowmobile routes that we did have in the past have been removed, and I wonder if that's something that we might be able to reassess. For example, Gateway Drive at one time was a designated snowmobile route. I think 62nd Avenue at one time was a snowmobile route, and most recently, it was 42nd Street that was removed. Other people have suggested having the snowmobiles with other motorized vehicles. I think that is a route that would make sense for us and allowing people to ride on the river. We were out snowshoeing on Sunday, and there were many snowmobiles out on the river. While many of us were recreating on the Greenway, there was no conflict. I also think that if we're going to look at solutions, looking at the greater Grand Forks area might be helpful, because I have seen snowmobiles in the East Grand Fork side, and I don't know if those are designated trails where they're allowed to go, but maybe there's a way where we can accommodate people without tearing up the space and the trails on the Grand Fork side and the Greenway, which I think would be very unfortunate. I know there are many very responsible snowmobilers, and I hope we can accommodate them in some way. I have had personal experiences where a snowmobile charged at me going full speed and then veered off at the last second and waved at me. I've also had where a very narrow situation where I don't think it was intentional, but they were coming up over the old dike while I was trying to go down, and we almost hit each other, and I would definitely have been the loser in that situation with a machine. The other thing I neglected to share, an invitation last time I was here. I know some of you have gone out on snowmobiles on the Greenway, and I hope you will also. I know some of you are out there regularly on cross-country skis or running or doing other things, but for those of you who haven't, we would love to take you out snowshoeing, cross-country skiing or skate skiing, bird watching, and so you can enjoy those and other experiences. And some of you I wouldn't probably be able to keep up with anymore on my skis, but Mayor Baczynski, I think you in particular might enjoy skate skiing, and I think we could find some hockey players or skate skiers who could do that with you. I do think this has become polarized in an unfortunate way, and I hope that we can find solutions together by listening to each other. But I do believe that's a space worth protecting, and I hope that we will uphold the idea that it's a place where we can go without having the noise and threat of motorized vehicles. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Christensen, please.
Hello.
If you bring guests up, we get to hear their first names at least.
They wanted to come, I said that was fine.
All right. Who do we got with you?
What's your name?
Carmen.
And Rory.
Carmen and Rory, all right.
Good evening, Mayor Baczynski and members of City Council. I'm here to discuss with you today the ongoing issue with the request for the expansion of a snowmobile trail on the Greenway. I grew up in Oslo, Minnesota, and I've been a snowmobiler my whole life. I've loved it since I pushed my first throttle on my first kitty cat. We live in a great city, and as we all know, we have extreme and long winters. We are known for having two seasons, winter and construction. Winters are long here, and with two children, I'm constantly looking for things for us to do outside. This guy loves to play hockey, both indoor and outdoor. They love going down the hill at Lincoln Park, and they, we as a family, love snowmobiling. It's a great way to bring people together. The idea of having this trail from the south end where I live up to Demers is great. I love the idea of being able to get on my Polaris and drive it downtown and support downtown businesses. Grand Forks' Greenway is a place for our citizens and tourists to enjoy outdoor recreational activities of their choosing. And if mine, my children's, and everyone behind me who's in support of this idea, if their chosen recreational activity is snowmobiling, so long as safety standards are being followed, I don't know why we're being precluded from enjoying our chosen recreational activity. In conclusion, as a citizen of Grand Forks, and as an avid snowmobiler, and as a mother, I'm here to appeal to all of you to allow the expansion of the trail. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sherry. So that's all for citizen comments. We do have an update on the snowmobile route here coming up, but it looks like we got two presentations first. Awards, I think three awards, presentation appointments, and proclamations.
Point one is the 2022 Community Health Assessment Report.
Good evening, Mayor Baczynski and members of the council. My name is Haley Brune. I'm the Nursing and Nutrition Manager at Grand Forks Public Health. Tonight, I'm joined by Audrey Lorenz, Director of Strategy and Regional Development with Altru Health Systems. And we're here tonight to give you a quick presentation on our process and results for the 2022 Community Health Assessment. We'll be giving you just a quick overview on the process, how we collected data, the priorities, and what we see as our next steps. And with that, I'll turn it over to Audrey.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and other city leaders. Thank you for your time this evening. As we think about the process that we used, I want to take us back just a little bit and give you a little background of the purpose of a community health assessment. Altru Health System is required to conduct a community health assessment every three years. That was part of the Affordable Care Act that was passed a number of years ago. So we have engaged in this process every three years, beginning in 2013. Our executive team at the time made it very clear that this wasn't work that Altru would do in a vacuum, but that it was work that should be done with the community, for the community. So we have engaged every cycle, a community advisory committee, to help us do the work. Starting in 2016, we worked in partnership with public health. So we have done the last three assessments hand-in-hand with the team from Grand Forks Public Health. So we've enjoyed a great partnership and really a lot of mutual benefit as we've worked together on this work. You can see the process that is, has guided our work. We use a process that's developed by the Association for Community Health Improvement, which is an arm of the American Hospital Association. Pretty straightforward as you think about this work. So I won't go through step by step, but to say that as we're with you tonight, we are in between step six and step seven. So we are, we are documenting and communicating our results, and then, as Haley will mention toward the end, we'll be getting into our implementation strategies. strategies in, I guess, in this month. It is January, isn't it? So as we worked on this process this year, we had about 30 organizations from across the community at the table with us or virtually. And we just received some really rich feedback, as we have in every other year, or every other assessment, I should say. The information from this assessment gets used by a variety of agencies and organizations. It can be used by others in the community for grant writing. It can be used for legislative advocacy and other purposes. So it serves more than just checking the box for a regulation for Altru Health System. It is a true community-driven effort and a valuable product for the community. I'll turn it back to Haley.
And I'll be talking about how we collect data. So the data collection process is a really robust effort, and as we have in years past, we engaged a student team from the Masters of Public Health Program at the University of North Dakota. This year, we had a very exceptional team working with us. They were Minroch Kifashi, Nicole Benson, and Sarah Larson, with support from Ashley Bain and Andrew Williams, who are faculties of the MPH program. The data collection process consists of four components, and I'll be walking through those with you. So when we look at secondary data, this is data that already exists. This list comes from agencies and organizations letting the advisory committee know what sources are out there that they work from, that they use in their practice. And one of them that I'd like to highlight here is the Community Health Rankings. Community Health Rankings is a collaboration between the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation and the University of Wisconsin Population Health Institute. What's really nice about county health rankings is that it allows us to observe trends over time. And so you can see here that we took a step backwards, moving from 21 to 22. You can see here that Polk County, which is part of our region, we do this together with Polk County, positively increased from 71 to 44. And we've been engaging with our partners in East Grand Forks to find out what they did to improve so greatly from one assessment to the next. You can see the positive changes that residents report here. We see a lot of positive things happening in quality of life, health factors, health behaviors, clinical care, changes in our physical environment, number of mental health providers, and excessive drinking. But there are still opportunities from community health assessment to show where we could improve. The team conducted a set of community survey, and this year we had almost 400 respondents to our community survey. You can see that overall respondents felt that there are good opportunities available within the community and that there is good overall health, but that it's important that we make necessary improvement when it comes to affordability and accessing certain types of care. I think it is important to note that the majority of our survey respondents did self-identify as being white females who were college-educated and had an annual income of over $74,000 annually. So I think this really highlights an area of opportunity in future assessments, as well as why it's critically important for us to conduct focus groups. We conducted two types of focus groups. One type was with community members. This was driven by the advisory committee's input on certain populations that we would specifically like to hear from, who might be less engaged in participating in a community survey, but we felt was really important to share their perspective. Those four groups were our New American, Foreign Born, and Immigration Group, our LGBTQ+ Community, Adults with Disabilities, and Native American Indigenous Populations. Thank you. We also conducted a focus group for community leaders. We identified 50 different community leaders to participate, and of that, we had 16 respondents. So you can see here that overall, the focus groups had a very similar sentiment to what the community surveys were, but there was a lot of differences as well, such as mental health, discrimination, insurance and healthcare costs, transportation, dental care access, lack of knowledge and resources, and program qualifications. The focus groups did also highlight some solutions that we have, such as, or we could implement, such as sensitivity trainings, having resource hubs, and different community support. And I'll let Audrey talk about priorities.
So as we go through all of that information that we gleaned from the various processes that Haley just mentioned, you can imagine the discussions that we were able to have. So the advisory committee took the time to review and talk through all of the different facets of the data, and the discussion in 2022 was very different from previous health assessments. So I think it's a sign of the times. We had a lot of conversation around diversity, equity, health disparities, and how we really can work to highlight and make improvements in some of those areas across the community. And as you can imagine, we also had a lot of conversation around mental health and well-being and the impact that the last few years have had on many people because of all the different factors related to the pandemic. So as we look at setting priorities, the advisory committee approved the criteria that you see on the screen. So taking into account all of the data, their knowledge as a healthcare, or not healthcare, but as a community leader and what they know about the community, we asked them to determine, okay, what's the most important thing that we need to be looking at as a community over the next three years? So we did a two-step electronic process to help us determine those priorities, and we can look at those now. The first one, far and away, the first priority was related to mental health. So we will be focusing on improving the mental well-being of all residents and building resilience. I think there's a number of things that are already at play in the community that we can leverage, but we'll need to focus on that and do more, quite frankly. Workforce came up this time around. As I mentioned, our discussions were different this year when we did the assessment, and workforce was a newcomer to the priority list. So really, understanding how we can collaborate across the different sectors to expand the available workforce. Access to care is another priority, and this has been a theme in past assessments. So increasing access to primary, specialty, behavioral, and oral healthcare with a focus on reducing barriers. Substance use is another priority that has come up before, so reducing the prevalence of substance use, including alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Childcare came up as connected to workforce, which I'm sure you can imagine, but developing strategies to meet the childcare needs of the region with a focus on access and affordability. And then lastly, obesity. So reducing the prevalence of obesity in the population through increased access to supportive services and reduced cost burden. So because some of these items are repeat priorities, that doesn't mean that the community hasn't done good work or done a good job addressing these things in the past. I think it just speaks to the magnitude of these issues and the ongoing work that it's going to take to address them, to really make a dent, so to speak, especially as we think about efforts related to obesity and mental health.
And so tonight, we're here with you. It's an informational item for you, so thank you for the opportunity to come in here tonight and speak with you about this. We'll be posting our results to our respective websites, and then we'll be establishing a working group. The next step after the Community Health Assessment is the Community Health Improvement Plan, which we call the CHIP. And so as you can see, this is really going to take a collective effort with a lot of different partnerships. Like Audrey mentioned, with workforce and childcare being kind of new to our region as far as a community health priority goes, we are seeing it across the region as some of our regional partners are doing their respective community health assessments. So I think it's a really great opportunity for us to build some new partnerships and work together on some of these. And at this point, I think we can take questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions from council at this time? All right, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Three point two is the Legislative Update.
Mr. Vernstrom.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I'll just touch base real quick on some of the bills we're taking a look at this week and a quick note of something that happened in the last week. But coming up this week, obviously with the holiday, with the Martin Luther King Jr. holidays, Tuesday, so the legislature did meet on Monday. There is a couple of bills where we're taking a peek at. House Bill 1261 is Medicare waivers for institutions that help support behavioral health. That was introduced by our very own Emily O'Brien. I know Michael Doolittle provided testimony in support of that bill yesterday. Also yesterday, House Bill 1211 is an expansion of the Homestead Tax Credit, opportunity for those 65 and older to get a tax breakthrough application process, and it's expanding that. Looking ahead, on Wednesday, House Bill 1199, that is the funding through the Bank of North Dakota to get these community and technical education centers built around the state that applied for federal grants and received the federal grants, but that money is now getting hung up at the federal level. So the Bank of North Dakota is looking to provide funds to get these off the ground, and the Bank of North Dakota will get paid back once those federal funds are released. So that is being heard on Wednesday in House Appropriations at 9:15. And then Senate Bill 2183 is also on Wednesday at 9:30 in Senate Appropriations. That's a bill that was put together. It's emergency funding for all the snow removal that's gone on in the state. Kind of working through the details a little bit of what it would take to get some of this funding, but they're looking to get some emergency funding to help those, you know, your cities, your counties, your townships that have had some huge expenses moving snow so far this winter. And there is an emergency clause in that bill that would make it available as soon as it is passed. House Bill 1330, a bill we've looked at a couple of times. It's in the Finance and Tax on Wednesday at 9:30. It's taking a look at the methodology of special assessment. Maybe not the most well-written bill in the world, so we're following that one of what they're trying to do, what their intentions are. Things are special assessed depending on the project in different ways, so this is trying to getting the state involved in local special assessments. We're keeping an eye on that one. On Thursday, Mayor, you're headed down there to testify for the water bill, Senate Bill 2020. I believe specifically you're going to be talking about Red River Valley Water Supply, correct?
Yeah.
So we support that. So Mayor will be there on Thursday. And then on Friday, House Bill 1012 is the Department of Transportation, just overall budget bill, but in that bill is $140 million to try to get into a flexible spending fund to try to use the term to finish that last mile of road, because the state does so far, local does to a point, and there's gaps in there, and they're looking to fill that gap. And want to make a note, last Friday, we had people from Grand Forks in Bismarck testifying against House Bill 1039 and 1040. Both those bills are trying to end the PERS Pension Plan. And just want to make a note, Marine Storsted, you were there. We had Darren Shimkey representing the Firefighters Association as well. And want to make a special note and thank you to Jamison Fuqua. He's our lead maintenance mechanic. And tell you what, he blew him away. He did a really good job, and I apologize to our Public Works people because we're going to have Jamison in Bismarck a lot, I think. He did a really good job. Other than that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Start with Councilman Vice President Weber. Did you have anything as the chair of that legislative?
Thanks for the update, John. And I'll reiterate the testimony that was given on Friday. It changed the tenor in the room. It changed the conversation. So thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you, Mr. Vernstrom.
Thank you.
Three point three is the Snowmobile Road Update.
Mayor, on your behalf, we put together a presentation, so I'm going to have some of our colleagues from the various city departments. We've got an update to answer some of the concerns that people have had, you know, pro and con regarding the snowmobile route, and then importantly, get some feedback from you tonight as we move forward. So with that, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Melanie, come up here. And right now, we know Melanie as the Water Works Director, but because Melanie and I have been together a long time here with the city of Grand Forks, really she started out as the Greenway Coordinator. And so when you think and see all the great things that are in the Greenway, all the things that were constructed, in large part, Melanie was the project manager, and it's hard to believe this now when you look at the Greenway, but we took a lot of flak for making it as great as it is now. So everyone believes and appreciates how great it is, but it's because of people like Melanie Parby, it is as great as it is. So I want to have Melanie give you some background, go through some of the slides on the Greenway itself, and then we're going to turn it over. Jeevan's going to talk about the noise study that the mayor had us do. Dwight Love from the Police Department is going to talk about law enforcement, making things safe. And then, of course, Mr. Gostik's going to talk about some of the legal and fines and that sort of thing. And then finally, open up regarding next steps on behalf of Mayor Bajinski. So thanks, Melanie.
Ms. Parby.
Thank you, Mayor Bajinski, members of the council. So one of the things we wanted to note is that when we were designing the Greenway project, working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, there was a number of public meetings that were held all throughout the community. The community input was really important, and it was important for people to want, to have, I'm sorry, to have input on what they wanted in those areas. Most of the discussions during that time were, where should we have access points into the flood wall or up and overs on the levee so people can, you know, get down to the Greenway? Should there be parking lots for access, or should it just be a neighborhood access? Should there be playground equipment? And if there was, you know, what side of the levee should it be on? And interestingly enough, we were able to provide, I think, a pretty good balance. Some areas wanted to make sure that they had access. There was other areas that really wanted kind of more neighborhood, just neighborhood access points and not large parking lots, et cetera, and it seemed to make sense. But it was probably a year of discussions and development and design and redesign and discussions and continued feedback within the community. During that process, a group was formed. At the time, they were called Greenway Alliance. Today, we refer to them as the Greenway Technical Committee. That group was put together initially by the Army Corps of Engineers and designers. That group had involvement and expertise from federal, state, and local agencies such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Minnesota DNR, North Dakota Parks and Rec, kind of et cetera. Those individuals came together to help us understand what it would take to have this space along the river in Grand Forks, as the city of Grand Forks and the Park District really didn't have anything like this at that time and wanted to really try to understand all the challenges that came with it. So through that process, and I kind of provided these lists, there was lots of, lots more discussion, you know, how much should we mow? How much should we leave natural? How much is it going to cost if we mow certain areas? Some people wanted it mowed all the way to the river because they were afraid of what would happen if we didn't have mowed and manicured spaces, if we got rid of all the trees. We couldn't get rid of all the trees because it provides some stabilization. So as we kind of learned more and really understood, you know, a balance for this space, we worked with the community and their input too and different users, because somebody who wants to see birds and species of birds in different areas didn't want us to come in and mow those spaces. So we had a lot of discussions, and the community, I'm sorry, the Greenway Technical Committee still serves as that avenue for us to kind of try to work with all different user groups to find a balance. There's kind of that balance as we looked at putting in boat ramps. There was only certain spots along the river that made sense in order to be able to really technically be able to build a boat ramp, but neighborhoods at the time, you know, didn't want people who were boating, driving through their neighborhoods because of what might happen. And even today, we might not even notice where those are unless you use those on a regular basis. One thing that definitely developed was the cross-country ski trails. We talked about snowmobile trails and cross-country ski trails. At the time, city council did not want us to have snowmobiles within city limits. We did come to some sort of consensus and allow snowmobiles from Demers Avenue North, and that still is the case. But cross-country ski trails were just in Lincoln Park. So those trails have expanded over time with people's input and desire to continue to do that sport, also to have, you know, an area to walk that's compacted as if you try to go down there now in certain spaces, you'll sink, fat tire bikes, et cetera. So as user groups come to the Greenway Technical Committee, they try to vet those ideas and look at how they can possibly work with them. So tonight, I guess that's what I'm bringing you is information on what's happened, why we do what we do, and how we can continue to work with different user groups to be able to utilize this space. So we do have a number of maps that were put together. We just wanted to highlight that these maps aren't to scale, and they don't show the actual distance in the space. And then we can work with these maps, right? And they're not, apologize, because on PowerPoint, they really didn't give a good view of them, but the blue trails are snowmobile, red lines are cross-country ski trails, and the green is the paved trails that are currently in that area. And then there was X's kind of put in. And then there was X's kind of put in where there were some spots where they crossed. So this is the northern part of Grand Forks. As you can see, like I said, it doesn't include the whole area all the way up to Demers Avenue. But we can share those maps too and continue to look at those in a little bit more detail. You do have some points here where they would cross. And then in this area, this is Lincoln Park, which was kind of the first area where cross-country ski trails were developed. Of course, most are familiar with this space. This is along the flood wall, and then it crosses over here. The green trail is the paved trail. I'm sorry, yes.
That part is already through, is right where?
No.
That last slide?
Nope, the very first one.
Because this is the north end, right? Where the snowmobiles are allowed?
The very north end where snowmobiles are allowed are from Demers Avenue North. And so the part that you've seen on that map was just, just south of there and then to Minnesota Avenue. And then I skipped through to the beginning. Or I'm sorry, to the end. So we went through those kind of fast. I can go back. This is the first one that you were looking at. This is Minnesota Avenue. So the current spot where they are allowed is north of here, and you can't see it on this map. I can send them to...
Do any of your slides show?
The current map, no. The current spot, no.
On the current spot where snowmobiles are allowed, do the trails cross still?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I believe that they're separate enough in that area.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. So this is Lincoln Park. Sorry. The red is the cross-country ski trails, which is dominantly kind of in that interior loop. And this is just an idea of how we could possibly work to put those. So as you can see, some of the areas, and like I said, these images aren't the best, so apologize a little bit there. But there are some spaces that are quite wooded where you could, where you have some more challenges. I'm sorry. Belmont Road, and there's an access here for the paved trail, but this is just where they're separate, kind of parallel. And then the furthest spot south is where the trail might connect there. Some ideas, anyway, that have been presented, and I believe this is one of the, one of the options that the snowmobile club worked out with the Greenway Technical Committee, or they were at least looking at some options there on how to best locate these trails. Do we want to go back on any of the maps? I'll pass it on to Jayden.
Good evening, members of the council. We were asked to do some noise assessments of what a snowmobile trail would be through the area here. The Police Department did come out with their snowmobile and did a few different runs as we measured from different distances and locations. Basing it off of the current city noise ordinance, our findings are in the 40 to mid-40s for snowmobile traveling about 15 miles an hour, steady-state speed. That's going to be well within ordinance levels. Some locations that we were at, we were measuring a couple of spots within 50 feet of the snowmobile passing by us. Other locations were further away from 330 to 260, where points one and three. And so the noise levels aren't tremendous. To put that in perspective, 40, 50, your dishwasher runs at this. Conversation is around 50. The matter is going to be, there's a lot of science behind sound, but what it's going to come down to is the subjectivity of what the citizens care about. It's going to be a different sort of noise. It's not going to be no noise. It's going to be noise coming from within the Greenway versus other motor traffic noise. In terms of motor vehicle traffic, this is a low level. Certainly, you would expect some more noise as they start from a stop and accelerate. But if they can go at steady-state speed, 15 miles an hour is not going to have them opening their throttles for any long amount of time to get to that speed. So that's some points from our perspective, I guess, on the noise side. And certainly happy to take any questions as they come up now we're at the end.
Do you have the next slide? What's the current? Yeah, there you go.
So the current motor vehicle at 40 miles per hour or less would be 80 decibels, where, you know, half of that, or 45, a little more than half of that. But we're nowhere near 80 decibels at a steady-state speed of 15 miles an hour. Yeah, happy to take any other questions.
Any questions for Mr. Bedard?
Sure. So these, these measurements were taken at 15 miles per hour. And what changes, what kind of decibel readings do you see as speed increases?
I wasn't there taking the readings, but 40, those numbers when we do our assessment would be the top peak of what we saw on the meter.
Very good. And as you noted, these are relatively low. This would be a snowmobile with market situation rather than aftermarket.
I can't speak to the Police Department. Dwight Love could probably speak a little bit to what the snowmobile that the Police Department has, is.
Thanks. But we can come back to that.
I've been asked many times, can we do this safe? And I think we can. We can do it safely if we do it smartly. And we do it smartly with following the three Es of patrol response. The big thing is we need a groom trail. We have to work with the snowmobile club because without a groom trail, anyone that's been down there knows it's difficult, difficult to ride. So if we do that, and we make sure that we do a groom trail in a fashion that mitigates speed, slows the sleds up, I think that's going to help us enforce the speeds later on. Working with the location, working with Kim Greendahl and the Greenway and the snowmobile club, if we all work together, we can come up with a groom trail that makes sense, makes it easy for us to enforce. The big thing with that is signage, maybe putting up some fences, funneling the snow sleds in the right place so they don't cross over and hit the groom trails for the other people that are using the Greenway. So I think fencing, signage, and then just making sure that the signs are in the right spots so people know the rules. Next, education. We have to make sure that we get the message out before the snow flies. So if we do social media, we do some press releases, and we get down there early on, and we stop some sleds, make sure that people understand the rules. As long as we do that, and we push out the education piece continually, not just right at the beginning, but maybe every week, send something out, make sure people understand what the rules are so that they're not shocked when we show up and we start writing citations. And then finally, enforcement. Nobody likes that, right? Nobody likes getting a citation. And I know the fines aren't significant, but really enforcement and citations is just another piece of education. You have to pull people over, make sure they understand. And if they don't follow through and do the right thing, then you have to cite them. But that's, that's really the end. You know, you want to educate first. You want to, you want to be there, make sure they understand the rules. And I think if we do all three of those Es, we'll be fine. I think we can 100% do it safely, but we have to do it the right way.
Any questions? I got one question. You know, on the education and probably enforcement side too, do you see, you know, obviously we're going to have to do a little bit more work to find out the cost. But I think, do you see setting up, you know, an officer or two, you know, on the weekend at the start of the route to kind of give people reminders of the end of the route? I mean, have you thought about some of those types of options, especially early on?
Sure. We've done that in the past. We did not do it recently because the snow is so deep down there. Without a groom trail, it's very difficult. It's very difficult to send novices out there on sleds and expect them to do it safely. I think anyone that's been down there realizes this year, we got a lot of snow, and it's really deep down there. So we have to have a groom trail if we're going to do it right. But I agree, we will put people back down on the trail during events.
All right. Any other questions yet? Ms. Slonsky, please.
So there's a huge chunk of this map that's missing. So Reeves Court would be equivalent to Fifth Avenue, and then it jumps to 10th Avenue where the snowmobile trail is way on the side of the river. There's just five blocks missing of this map that, that are pretty big, where, five blocks where there would be a lot of overlap. So I think there's, there's just a lot of pieces missing. I feel like we're kind of only getting pieces of the puzzle.
And I think that map is just a guide. We're certainly not finalizing any routes. And when I talk about a groom trail and doing it smartly, I think we have to work together and finalize the route with the snowmobile club and the Greenway. And then at that point, we'd have a final map. But we have to make sure we separate those groom trails, the cross-country skiers from the snowmobile club, and that's fine. So this is just kind of a guide to kind of show you the space and where the route would be.
I think as you look at the map, obviously, the Lincoln Park is like your ideal. That's, you know, choice A there. That's what you're trying to do. You got the route, you know, further away from the cross-country skiers. It'd be no different than being on the river, other than it's a lot safer place to ride your snowmobiles. So I think, obviously, you can't do that everywhere, but it'd be looking at, you know, where can we do a little bit more work to maybe get that route separated a little bit and closer to the river? I mean, sometimes, you know, the cross-country skiers are going to want to have their, you know, routes going in certain areas too. So I think it's working together and seeing what we can live with. But I think Lincoln Park is your, I mean, that's what you're really shooting for, I think, when you look at the trail, is something similar to that.
Right. I think the big thing is to collaborate with everybody involved down there. Separate them when you can. If they do get close together, you have to sign it. You have to maybe put a couple fences to funnel people in the right direction. And then if you do it smartly and you put some curves in there, keep the speeds down, that's going to add to the safety of everybody involved.
Mr. Weber, please.
Yeah. In conversations with Mr. Koster, I just think it's worth noting, the snowmobile club is wanting enforcement. This is not just something of law enforcement or city council, but those who are supporting a safe route absolutely want enforcement. And the mayor has just indicated there's more work needs to be done to determine what the cost for that would be. But you mentioned a couple officers. Currently, we're maybe a little bit shy in workforce with the JFPD. Would this require a couple additional officers for those four months from December 1st through the end of March?
No, you have to remember, in the past, we've done additional enforcement down there. We have snowmobiles. It's just that we need a groom trail. We need some, something safe down there for the officers to go down there. It's just too deep right now to put people consistently down there. As far as costs, it's always been part of our cost. We've always had to pay for people to be down there, especially during Greenway days and other special functions. If we were to kick something like this off, I would think we'd probably have to put a few more hours than we have in the past. But that's really kind of like a special event, just like being at the Alaris or directing traffic after a hockey game. It's additional special event, is how I view it.
But an additional special event, a special event lasts for a couple days, three or four days maybe at the longest, and with fixed hours. This would, you'd be needing to be down there most of the time when the Greenway's open if you're going to be doing reasonable patrolling, right?
Well, I think you have to do like we do on the street. You have to do smart enforcement.
Sure.
And put people in the right place at the right times. And certainly, if you go down to the Greenway, there's times where there's not that many people there. So we'd hit high-density times during the weekends when there's a festival down there, when maybe a school's down there cross-country skiing. That would be the smart way to do it, right? So that's what we'd be doing. We wouldn't do 24/7. That'd be ridiculous.
Good. Thanks. Thanks. On slide five, and so I'm going to be bouncing around a little bit here.
Nope, sure.
We'll wait on that. Very good. Thanks. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
So you brought up like a special event, but if there's a special event, they pay for your presence to be there. I know I brought this up a lot.
Yeah, sometimes that would be an option, yeah.
But this special event would be all winter? So who would pay for it?
Well, it would depend, right? Right now, we do special events, and it comes all with Special Events Fund. And sometimes, we pay for all of our overtime. We do have a budget for that. So it really depends on a lot of factors, right? So it's hard to predict the future and what our staffing is. Maybe in another year, our staffing will be in such a place that we can just put people down there with no overtime. But that's predicting the future. If I could do that, I wouldn't be standing here. I'd be a rich man.
And then I know some people have said like they would like to come downtown to visit a restaurant. If you're on a snowmobile, where do you park? What, like, I'm just kind of trying to figure out how that would even be an option. Are you going to park at the Lower Greenway Lot and go to the toasted frog? Or I'm just, where do you park a snowmobile?
Right. If it was me, I'd park in that Lower Riverboat parking lot because you can walk two, three blocks and hit most restaurants in the downtown area. I guess it's your aptitude for cold weather, how far would you park, you know?
But that's already currently available too, right?
Right. Because they can come in from the north.
Mayor, I just got a question. Yeah, Mr. Raigle, please.
Lieutenant Love, you, the Grand Forks Police Department regularly patrols the Greenway through the spring, summer, and fall, correct?
Yes.
Really, I think it's something that should be patrolled in the winter as well. As everybody knows, crime, crime doesn't stop in the winter. And the Greenway does provide a way for people to get through to different parts of town. And I think what you're saying makes sense. I also had the opportunity to talk to Sheriff Schneider, and they were in favor of assisting the city police department. They obviously lack snowmobiles, but they said they would be willing to partner with the Grand Forks Police Department to assist with the additional patrols throughout the winter with the use of the city snow cats, if that could be worked out.
I'm all for it. We do a lot of things with the sheriff's department, and we'll take whatever help they can give us. That's, that's great.
All right. Any other questions for Lieutenant Love? All right, Mr. Fionn, please, continue.
I think the other request was for Mr. Gostic to give you a briefing on the current ordinances and fines and that sort of thing.
Sure. And what you've got before you is the, really, a summary of the Greenway ordinances and some of the, you know, hours of operations. And currently, motor vehicles aren't allowed in the Greenway, except, I guess, from Demers Avenue North. The penalty provision right now is a $500 fine, obviously in the discretion of the court. It's up to that amount. And the court can always suspend or revoke that particular penalty for violating these provisions. And I pointed out a couple other items. If you disturb a natural, natural features or disturb culturally sensitive areas that have been designated by the city, that would also fall within that penalty provision in the Greenway. In fact, being there outside of the hours of operation also could subject you to that $500 fine. With respect to the, you know, if there is this proposed trail in the Greenway, keep in mind that that, that area that would be designated wouldn't be subjected to that $500 fine. But if there's a snowmobile outside of that designated trail, then that $500 fine would be applied because you're not in the designated area at that point. Just pointed out a couple other items. This is under our ordinances with respect to snowmobile operation, particularly with the speed. It's a 50 mile an hour rate at this point. The penalty there is a $40 fine, which is twice what the state statute currently allows. There's a question as to whether we can go higher than that. There are some cases that were developed where City Fargo actually imposed a higher fine than was allowed by the state statute for non-criminal traffic violations, and that wasn't allowed. They changed the statute to allow us to do at least twice those penalties under state statute. Then I've also pointed out the noise ordinance. I think there was a discussion tonight about the readings that were taken, but if there is, exceeds those noise limitations, that's also subject to a $500 fine. And then one item that, actually President Sandy brought this to my attention, asked about this, is that if there's destruction of public property, and public property under the statute is fairly broadly defined, that that actually becomes a penalty of up to $1,000, 30 days in jail. broadly defined, that that actually becomes a penalty of up to $1,030 days in jail under the statute. So if somebody would happen to destroy public property in, within the Greenway or within one of these designated areas, that's also subject to a fine. So what, what I'm describing to you is just what's currently existing under our ordinances with respect to the possible offenses that could, could occur with respect to snowmobile use. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Goss, Ted?
I think, Mayor, we were just going to conclude with some thoughts and, and answering questions. We're all here to answer questions. But number one, the mayor's asked us under his authority to, to bring something back in the next snow year, and that would be the '23 to '24 season. Number two, to engage all of the various stakeholders, as we've done, as Melanie talked previously. All the things that we have there are purposeful and to do that. And I've even had, I think, Mr., yeah, Arch Simonsen is still in the back. And, and number one, he sent you an email earlier today. Number one, he lives along the Greenway. He's ridden snowmobiles his whole life and professionally. And he thinks he'd be like, one of those people that would like to be on this advisory group to try to find a way forward as we move forward. So we think we have some time to do all that activity, engage you as city council members along the way, ultimately try to come back here in the late summer, early fall to say, we've, we've got a solution that everyone can live with and we can move forward. And similar to what Melanie talked about, I don't know if all of you guys are, not, a minority of you folks are here, but the dog park that's in Lincoln Park was controversial. Almost never happened. The bolt ramp was controversial. Almost never happened. And those things are there and are functioning quite well. And all the horrors that people talked about at the time have not occurred, and it's been a benefit to the community. The bike paths are, are, are the width they are. The, the city council almost cut them in half at one time. Can you imagine those bike paths being half the width they are today? So there are, there have been some moments of truth at city council, where the city council, your predecessors made the right decisions and moved forward. We have two pedestrian bridges. We almost had three. And the third one would have been downtown, but a previous city council said no to that one. So can you imagine a pedestrian crossing in the downtown that we've always wanted? Well, that was one thing that didn't happen because the city council said no. And so what I think we want to do is, is part of this, be open-minded, like we always have been. Be objective. Don't be based on emotions. And to look for a solution to yes and bring that back to you for further consideration and engage the stakeholders along the way. So do what we've always done and do this one more time with the snowmobile route. That's what we're asking for on behalf of Mayor Potensky.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I was just gonna, just to sort of refine this. I think, you know, getting that advisory group formed, getting them going on this to refine the trail, come up with a proposal for signage, Mr. Chandler, and the, the club even offering to pay for the signage is a pretty, a pretty great gesture for cost, already taking care of the trail. So I really think those will be the next steps in getting down there and seeing, you know, going down on the trail and seeing exactly how we can separate and working with the cross-country ski group and seeing what they're comfortable with, too, and having them at the table. So I want to thank that. Thank the club for, for being here tonight and their comments. Really appreciate that. And thank you, everybody, for their comments tonight regarding the snowmobile route. Any other comments from council for now? Mr. Weber?
If I may, we're not going to, we're not even trying to solve this tonight. So we'll save most of the questions. But I have a couple quick questions, if I may. Slide five shows an access point near Kenowski. It was stated earlier that people don't want to have to trail, trailer their machines. But that means getting machines from streets onto the Greenway. And where, I'm not sure what that would look like short of allowing snowmobiles on the streets. But also, the snowmobiles, like, like other users, enjoy the bluebird days when it's a little bit warmer. Things get a little bit softer. And coming up over the dike, there, there is an opportunity for a machine to cause some damage to, to the dike at that point. What, what were we thinking of for access points? Because the map currently seems to show an access point at Kenowski. We wouldn't be using the paved trail, right? So what would the access look like?
Actually, the, so the green trail is the paved trail. So that's, I think, the access point that you're looking at. But we would need to identify.
No, I was looking at the bottom. There's a blue trail. It looks like.
Oh, in this area?
Maybe that's something else, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure. But we would need to identify areas where, or identify how we want people to be able to access that trail, whether it's trailering and having some significant spots, or, or maybe there's other options as well.
Well, I think the group can certainly look at that. I think your, your access points are going to be demurred where you've got that lower parking there already, where the trail ends from the north. And the other access point is just, you know, from 62nd on the south where you're, you know, out in the country already. But certainly something the group could look at is where there's more access points that are usable and functional. Mr. Weber, please, continue.
Yeah, just one more, and then I'll, then I'll drop it. For law enforcement, I know that there are already game cameras used down on the Greenway. There's, there's one often set up on the east side. Is it possible to use cameras to, to assist with enforcement? And do, do machines have any kind of identifying mark, a license plate or something?
I guess I can't speak for the police department, but I know, you know, there are different tools to be able to, to utilize for, we've looked at for illicit discharge and capturing license plates with vehicles in certain areas. So I, I mean, I think you could utilize something similar for snowmobiles as well. But I'll let Lieutenant, or Chief Nelson.
To answer your question, Mr. Weber, yes, we do have the availability that we could put some temporary game cams down there. And there is, there is a way that the sleds are identified, which is by a larger, like a reflective white type of sticker that's going to give you the registration number of the vehicle. Now, again, depending upon how your camera's placed or not, are you going to actually capture that? And basically, what that'll give you is the registration of the vehicle. But identifying a driver, you'd have to contact the owner of the vehicle, say, who was operating, and then work it back from that, especially on your more critical things, i.e. like the damage to property or something else. You bet that's something that we could, that we could walk back.
Thanks. Thanks, Chief.
Did you have any more follow-ups for me? So I don't want to.
I, I don't. My last follow-up was just for the mayor. If we're talking about putting a committee together.
Sorry, Chief. One more. Hang out for a second.
Yeah. When would we, when would we doing, when would we be doing this?
I think into the spring here, we'd, you know, get the group figured out. And then, you know, that's ideal right now, as, as many of us said. And I was down there myself. It's not very navigable right now. And, and the route needs some work. So I think it's going to make more sense to get that done in the spring and in the summer. So over the summer, I'd like to be able to get the group out there. In the spring, you know, get it formed, yeah.
Thanks.
President Sandy, please.
So Chief, thanks for, thanks for coming up to answer questions tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
The, so currently, even on the, the north end, you, you have to trailer your snowmobiles to, unless you come in from the north somewhere where, where it's outside of.
Correct.
The city limits. You have to trail, trailer your sleds to the Greenway.
You'd be correct.
Unloaded the Greenway. So if we open up the south end, what acts, where currently are there places where you can trailer your snowmobiles to, to park, to get out and run the Greenway trail?
Currently, what we've, what we've been using as your furthest south access point would be the Valley Dairy on 47th Avenue South.
But the Valley Dairy is, is a ways away from, from the Greenway, right?
Correct.
So how do you get from the Valley Dairy to the Greenway?
They, you wouldn't get to the Greenway from there since there's no south route. So that's where they could trailer to go south out of town. But since there is no southern route, there is no access point south.
I see. So you'd have to go back down.
You'd have to basically go all the town, or come back around the county, or if you were to go back into Minnesota, loop over there. And I think, if I could just circle around back to that, and I know that we've talked about that back and forth this evening, is I think another key player of working this out is getting the Minnesota side in alignment also, because there definitely is disparate thought processes between how they're managing their snowmobile trails and how we manage ours. So I think in order, for this thing to work, I think we got to bring all the players to the table to come up with a workable solution. And I, I'm a, I guess I'm a glass-half-full guy where I think we could reach something. But if we can't, at least we owe it to both sides to have that hard discussion and come to a logical conclusion.
But just, so I understand. We, we had two, two people that brought their kids up, and they, they spoke very positively about having snowmobiles on the Greenway, which is great. And I appreciate that they would do that, and they're showing their civic duty and teaching their kids that it's important to stand up and talk about these things. But in both situations, they have no access to the Greenway trail. They have to put their snowmobiles on a trailer, even though they're talking about living by the Greenway, they still don't, there is no access there. They have to drive somewhere else with their snowmobiles to, to access whatever Greenway trail there may be, whether it's the current one or a future one.
With the way the current routes are mapped out, to legally access the Greenway, there is no access point.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
All right. Any further questions or comments on that item?
I got one.
Yeah, Ms. Lunskey, please.
So I just, I'm, I'm a little nervous about allowing motorized vehicles on the Greenway. I, I did get a call last week from someone who would be interested in riding their antique tractor on the Greenway if we do allow motorized vehicles on the Greenway. I just think, once we open that door, I don't know if we can go back. So I just think we need to keep that in mind.
Yeah. And I'm, I think I've been very clear when I've talked about, I'm a UTV rider. I've got a UTV. Those are currently, you can get them street, you know, legalized for the street. So I think wheeled vehicles, other vehicles, you already have access to the community through the road. So snowmobiles do not, because there's not a route set up. So for me, that's the clear difference. And that would keep from any other of your four-wheel type of vehicles from, from being in the consideration, in my opinion. But certainly a well-pointed.
And, and I can just bolster what the mayor says. And, and I think, Ms. Lunskey, I totally understand, because that, when we brought forward the ability to put UTVs on the roadway, I was hit with the same thing. So what's next? Is it four-wheelers? Is it three-wheelers? Is it dirt bikes? And that has been able to be worked out. Now, I get it, it's two separate things. But I mean, we have to look at each one individually. And what's in front of us right now is this. And I think we, we'd have to come back if somebody says, hey, I want to do this. And again, if we have open, honest discussion and we can reach a logical conclusion, I, I think the vehicle is kind of irrelevant at that point in time, that we just have to address each one on its own merit.
All right. Ms. Parvey, Chief Nelson, Lieutenant Love, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Goss, thank you. All right, moving on to item four, public hearings. Second reading of ordinance says there are none this evening. So we'll move on to item five, action items. It's going to just open this up to council if they had some items they wanted pulled this evening for further discussion. So I'll put that up to you now and give you a moment to respond. President Sandy, anything?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We would be looking then for items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, and 5.13. To move forward on the, on a consent agenda motion, could I get a motion approved? We got a motion approved from President Sandy. And we got a second from Vice President Weber. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Hold up my sheet here now. Our, on to six information items.
6.1, investment portfolio management summary as of December 31st.
Thank you. Take that and file it. All right. And seven, approval of minutes and bills?
And 7.1 is the vendor list that's attached to your agenda.
All right. So everyone reviewed the vendor list and elected motion. Got a motion approved from President Sandy. And we have a second. A second from Vice President Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, Mr. Phelan, city administrator comments.
Mayor Potensky, I just wanted to point out on the agenda tonight, and no Arch Simonsen's there, I want to point out the two planning. Sometimes we get lost in the planning and zoning items or planning zone. But really, they're investments in our communities. I want to thank Mr. Simon for investing in a proposed logistics park, business park in and around Gateway Drive. And I think those are three of the items. And the other one is that Roastery, which are two investments in our community. And I just want to point those out, that they're certainly planning and zoning items, but more importantly, they're investments in our community. The other thing that Mr. Goss and I have been working on, we met today with Epitome Energy, and they're, they're continuing to move forward with their project. We met with their attorney. And so I think over the next few months, you will be seeing multiple times a, a proposed development agreement that will look similar to the, the FuFang USA Development Agreement. So we continue to work on that. And then Mr. Franz did, had really some good comments about us needing a, an agreement with FuFang as, on these various conditions. And I think that's been the important part of, that we do have a development agreement, to work in good faith to try to move that project forward. Importantly, I don't think the city council has said yes to the project at this point. You've said yes to working through all the various due diligence items. So I just want to let you guys know, we understand that and let the public know that we continue to work with FuFang on all the various conditions, so that we can come back here to say whether or not we've met all the conditions. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Item number nine, mayor council member comments. Mr. Weigle, still with us? Any comments this evening?
Just one quick one, Mayor. Thank you for talking about Lieutenant Thorpe. He's a, a great man. I had the opportunity to work with him for nearly 11 years. And he was just a fantastic person. And I appreciate everything he's done for our community and hope he rests in peace.
Thank you for that, Mr. Weigle. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Lunskey?
I have a couple. So last week, I had the opportunity to be on the Community Advisory Committee. And I was kind of overcome with the need in our community, the food shortages. But I was also, on the other side, kind of very proud of our community with all the nonprofits we have to address those needs. It was a little overwhelming that we couldn't meet all of the needs. But I just think it says a lot about Grand Forks with all the, the nonprofits we do have. The second thing, I was, for citizen comments, I was wondering if, before we do citizen comments, if we could be told how many we have, just so we can kind of mentally prepare. I'm a, I'm a planner that way. And then the last thing, I was, I was hoping to propose a traffic study for the Phoenix neighborhood, if we could proceed with a, with a study to figure out how we could make it a safer, walkable community for that neighborhood. And I'm not sure exactly how to go about that, but I thought I'd give it a start.
Yep. Councilmember Lunskey, well, obviously, we do traffic studies all the time. So I'll, I'll follow up with Algrass from Engineering, and, and we'll propose to move forward. It will probably be within our spending limit administered, which is $50,000. I suspect it'll be less than that. But we'll keep you and, and Councilmember Weber and others on the city council involved. But we'll, we'll move forward with the right consultant to move that forward, tied in with all the other grand plans that we have. So we'll move forward and, and get back to you.
What kind of timeline can you give us on that one, Mr. Phelan?
I think we should be able to be back within a couple weeks with a, an agreement and a scope and study to move forward.
And how long does that study period generally take?
I think, if you look, I think within a couple months, you're going to have some results. And, you know, depending on if we need to get new data. But similar to what we've done with FuFang, and we're moving forward with one with Epitome Energy, we'll put you in that loop of, of this, another important traffic study.
All right. Thank you. Any, any further comments, Ms. Lunskey? Okay. Let's see here. Vice President Weber, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. First, Ms. Lunskey, thanks for bringing that up. When we met with our counterparts in East Grand Forks, the one thing that we all agreed on that night was that we needed to have a traffic study done in, in that neighborhood. So thanks for putting that together, for requesting that. Going back to citizen comments earlier, Mr. Leek mentioned his connection with the Farmers Union. I recall the, I believe it was the very first time FuFang was presented to city council, and Mr. Leek at that point had expressed his concern about the impact on local co-ops. I had reached out to Mark Watney, the president of the Farmers Union at that time. He indicated to me that a cornmilling plant in this area would only be beneficial for growers and for elevator co-ops. I don't know if his mind has changed about that since. I'll, I'll reach out to him. But that was the response that I received from him at that time. And then regarding Mr. Franz's concern. And then regarding Mr. Franz's concerns about air quality, we do not yet have any data on projected air quality, but we have a development agreement, and if we move forward and eventually approve this plant, we would then have utility agreements, and is that where we would put in monitoring and enforcement aspects?
Mayor Potensky and Council Vice President Weber, I think in the air permit, really the crown jewel of the FuFang project moving forward and to include Epitome Energy, is going to be the air permit to construct. That's going to take several months of review to get that. It'll likely require a public hearing right here in Grand Forks, where people can see the presentation, they'll be able to comment on that. So I suspect that's going to take several months to receive. We're going also above and beyond that. Those are, those are permitted things, but we're also looking at the other parts of the air quality. You know, we've talked about odor, things that the air permit may not specifically have requirements on, but certainly we want to go above and beyond the current regulatory framework, knowing that there's concerns. And so we're going to have air emissions that may be required under the air permit, others we may require in addition as part of our quality of life here at Grand Forks.
And as far as enforcement of those, Mr. Bedard, he's a busy guy, works really hard. I don't know that we have the capacity to enforce that. Would that be the state DEQ that would be enforcing that? And would, in addition to any data that we get, can we also request what the enforcement resources would be, capability would be? Because that's going to be an important part of that as well.
Yeah. I think, Council Vice President, the enforcement on the air permit that I talked about, that DEQ is going to issue, that's going to be with the state of North Dakota. But there's going to be other enforcement that we're going to come up along, some of the other things that we're concerned above, above and beyond. Certainly, the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, they, they are going to lean on the city of Grand Forks, whether it's Public Health or with Javen or Waterworks with Melanie, because we are the local partner in enforcing some of these activities. And we'll, we may have some permits that don't involve the state, per se, that are our city of Grand Forks permits. So again, we'll have permits on the federal, state, and local side, and some of them will get intertwined also.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. President Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. To, to expand on what Mr. Weber was alluding to, Mr. Leek, not only did Mr. Leek say it would be detrimental to the local elevators, I want to confirm, we did have people come and talk to us about the fact that FuFang isn't going to have storage, corn storage on their location, correct?
Council President...
I mean, other than how much they're going to be milling in the next however amount of time, right?
Exactly. I agree with you, very limited storage. They certainly, similar to what Mr. Egan said about Epitome Energy, they want to, they want to have other people store the product.
Right. So if, knowing that that's the case, that there will be a need to be a steady flow of corn to go to the cornmill, the corn has to be stored somewhere else, so it's either going to be stored at the regional co-ops, or farmers are going to try to save a few dollars themselves and build their own storage facilities on their own property, right? But in theory, they're members of a co-op that they've already part owners in. So they're either helping their own co-op by having the co-op store their corn, or they're making a business decision that's right for them and building their own storage facility and perhaps leaving the co-op. But either way, either way, that's the farmers doing what farmers do best, make their own business decisions, outside of the control of anything that we do, because we know, again, FuFang is not going to have storage on their, on their facility. We were already told that. Mr. Phelan, Mr. Spicer mentioned that when there's a time of drought, the people of Grand Forks won't have any water. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the intake for FuFang is downstream, and we can tell them when they can and can't pump based upon our development agreement or the utility services agreement that we will have in the future, correct?
Mayor Potensky and Council President Sandy, that is correct, and we reverence the utility agreement quite often, and of course, we have a drought mitigation plan, too, that prioritizes residential human use above and beyond industrial use.
So in no situation ever will FuFang be manufacturing amino acids, and the people of Grand Forks having their water, unable to get water out of their tap? That's never going to happen.
That, the obvious answer is no, that's not going to happen.
Obviously. That is obvious. Thank you. I think we've been over that a few times. I appreciate Ms. Lunskey's dedication to the Phoenix Elementary students. As Mr. Weber said, we did, we all agreed that we have to do it, we have to do something, and we have to do it soon. I appreciate your saying that we can lump this in and we can get funding and we can, I think we need to make sure that we fully understand what the goal is that we're trying to accomplish. This study isn't for the 18 blocks. We need to look at Phoenix Elementary and the traffic that flows by Phoenix Elementary and have people thinking about safety and how do we make it safe for the students coming and going from that school. So as long as our consultants, you know, whoever we hire to do it, understands that that's what our goal, then I think we'll be fine.
Yep. What I'm hearing is it's, it's beyond the traffic study, but it's also about outcomes, and so we'll make sure the consultant, realistic outcomes that we can accomplish in the near term, is what I heard.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Regarding snowmobiles, I still have reservations. I believe that our police department can figure out how to, how to make sure that nobody gets run over by a snowmobile. I have confidence in our police department. I don't, I don't have confidence that we can readily patrol the Greenway, because it's a long way and we don't have the capital resources to do it. And I appreciate Lieutenant Love taking the high road and saying that we can do it and not costing us a bunch of money, but if we're actually going to do it, we, it's going to cost a lot of money. And more than that, I'll go back to my original position. I just don't think we need snowmobiles on the Greenway. I just, that's my opinion. I don't have anything against snowmobiles. What I believe is, I like the Greenway, it's peaceful, it's tranquil, and I believe Grand Forks has grown beyond the likes of Bemidji or the other small towns that like to have snowmobiles in their community, because they've always had them. I'm totally okay with them having that, and they've built an industry around that. I just believe Grand Forks is, has grown up and is beyond that point, and I just don't see the need to add it today. So I'm not advocating for the other council members to take my position and all sit in on that committee and talk with people and try to understand. I just, this is where I am with it, and so I want to be very transparent today so that in the spring or next summer, if my opinion hasn't changed, nobody's surprised when I vote no. I just don't want any surprises. This is how I feel today. Lastly, Mayor, there were a couple citizen comments that were posted at the end of the day. We duplicated one of them, we didn't put the second one on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, President Sandy. Won't go on really too long here, just want to thank everyone that came in and spoke and spoke respectfully and proper civil discourse, so thank you very much for that. With that, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We got a motion for Ms. Oselsky, a second for Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.